...to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronard Park-Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and also by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, which is N-I-X-L-E dot com. Now I'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Thank you very much. Now I'll move on to citizens business. I don't have any comment cards, but is there anybody from the public wishing -- oh, I spoke too soon. Just a moment.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a speaker card from Hillary Smith of Kattati.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Hillary Smith. I'm here in my capacity as your library commissioner from Kattati. As you know, the library's undergone a lot of changes in the past year. A new JPA, a new director, a new library commission, and we're now embarking on a strategic planning process to help us focus our resources going forward. As part of that process, the library is hosting a series of community forums that begin this week. Forums for staff input, forums for lab friends and foundation members, and public forums. The first of these is this Thursday, February 26th, in the Healdsburg Library from 5:30 to 7:00. The next is Thursday, March 5th, at the Rincon Valley Branch in Santa Rosa, also from 5:30 to 7:00. There's another meeting Thursday, March 12th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Sebastopol Library, and a meeting Friday, March 27th, at the Petaluma Library from 5:30 to 7:00. None are unfortunately in our Kattati-Ronard Park Library branch, but they are spread throughout the county to try and make it more accessible to citizens. And for people who can't attend these meetings, there'll also be surveys in the branches and online. So I would encourage you all to participate and to encourage people you know to take part in this planning process so that we have a library that's designed for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who'd like to make public comment during citizens business? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and then I'll ask if there are any direction on future agenda items. Starting on the right, no, nothing this week?
Not this week, yes.
Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to the fun part of our evening, which is our honorary mayor, Colton Davis of Rancho Kattati High School. So, Colton, will you get up and come forward?
Hi. So, I was talking to the members at my school, students, and for suggestions on how the city can get involved with the high school. And just some of the ones that we're thinking about is community service hours. To graduate from Rancho Kattati, you have to have 40 community service hours. And I was wondering if there is any way that the city can help get involved with, through any sort of program for students to graduate with their 40 hours? If there's any way that the city can get involved and help out with that? Because I know myself, I get hours through band, but it's not near 40 yet, and I'm only a sophomore, but, you know, it'd be, it'd help a lot, and I don't think I'm the only student there. So it'd be, it'd be nice if there was some sort of way you could work together for that and to be set up for that. And another idea was some sort of like a driver awareness or safety program for students at my school, because there's, me and clean myself, I've got my license, and there's quite a few others who are in the process of getting their licenses. And I think it'd be a good idea for the police department or the city to get involved and make some sort of an assembly or program or something to meet with the school and the students, just to make sure everyone's on the same page and everyone's doing the right thing. So those are the two main points for the most part.
Great, thank you. So does anybody want to comment and chat with them?
Sure.
Yes?
I'll go ahead and kick it off. Two really good points, Colton, thanks for bringing those up. And I know we have offered, and there's usually a number of volunteer efforts citywide for earning community service hours. So what it might behoove us to do is, I know that there's a committee that council member Harvey and I are on, which is the Two by Two by Two. So we have two council members from Kattati, two from Ronard Park, and two members from the school district. And we haven't had one of those meetings in a while, but it would be a good thing to kind of pool both cities together and say, you know, here are the opportunities, and get that to the, get it to the ranch and even get it to Tech High and whoever needs to see, you know, here are the opportunities you guys can look into. And maybe we could update our website from there. So that's something I can follow up on, but that was a really good point. Thanks for bringing that up. I don't know if I asked you this last time, but did I mention or ask anything about project graduation?
You did, I think.
I did. I can't remember what you said, though, because it was two weeks ago, and I'm like, I'm really old, I don't remember these things. So were you aware or are you aware of Project Grad?
I wasn't aware. I am now, of course, but, so yeah, I think I'm looking to that. It seems to be a very good program for that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great thing, again, for the graduating seniors, and it's really good for, you know, sophomores and/or juniors, even freshmen, to kind of get involved. That way you kind of have an idea of what it's like. And there's a, talk about volunteer hours. Some of us, when we were on that board, were really gracious with putting down the number of hours for the work you did. I'm just saying, in case it's an opportunity. So something to look into, but thanks for your report out, appreciate it.
That's my Marvy.
Yeah, those are great ideas. One of the things that I thought is possibly reuse interns, and maybe there's an opportunity, maybe for some of the students from the high school to do that. And yes, John, you brought up the Two by Two by Two, and we are going to get that going again. I'll talk about that later in council reports, but that is a good place for that to be brought up. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor Schumlin. Well, welcome back, Colton. Good to see you again. I'm going to agree with my colleague, Two by Two by Two sounds like a good place to look into this. I was kind of jotting down, trying to think, not only what things can we offer, but what is the realm of actions that you can take to earn credits? Because I began to think, hmm, there are probably a lot of things that might be right under, escaping our notice, that might be viable to do this with. The first thing that came to mind is, we used to have a lot of credits, both for you and particularly also for the college, over with Creek Critters. And that was a very good thing. And that worked, because although supervision was required, and there were concerns naturally, we were able to drive pretty large numbers of people sometimes. And with that number of people, it served two things. I mean, it was worth the investment for the Creek Critters staff to put that on, but then you guys got a lot of hours and a lot of good work got done. So I'd suggest I wait to see maybe what comes back from the Two by Two by Two Committee. I love that name. And then perhaps just, not an official request, but just a suggestion, sending upstream. I don't know if there's any possibilities for organizing something with Public Works. I wouldn't want them to put a lot of time into it. But if you were able to say, hey, I can drive 30 people for, for an afternoon, or a morning, or a day, if we can get a certain amount of credits, there's, there must be always weeding and other lovely chores. I'm thinking of the type of things we used to do at Creek Critters. So just, just a thought. And if anything comes back down, maybe we can contact Mr. Davis with that and see if we can help you.
Thank you.
So thank you for being here tonight. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, too. Thank you.
Councilor, or, sorry, Vice Mayor Moore?
Well, Colton, it's nice to see you. I was out of town at the last council meeting, so I didn't get a chance to meet you there. Thank you for participating in the honorary mayor program. One of the goals that I am looking forward to, and I think some of the council members are looking to support down the road, is eventually try to reopen up a teen center here, once we kind of get a little bit more established fiscally from the most recent economic downturn. And with that in mind, it would be wonderful to have team participation in bringing that up and volunteering, because I think when we first did that before, that was a lot of what brought that to fruition. And, you know, kids coming in and cleaning and painting and things like that really gives them a sense of ownership. And I would highly encourage you to continue to view our website and keep updated on progress and maybe check out some of the agenda items as they're coming up down the road, as we get a little bit more stable. And I think it'd be a great opportunity to get involved and also to get the word out that we're hoping to get something like that going.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, thank you. And the only other thing I had thought of is with the driver's safety awareness, I participated a few years ago in this program called Every 10 Minutes, and I don't know if they always do it at the Santa Rosa High School, or if they rotate it around, but do they?
They have, I know they've done it at the.
They've done it at Rancho? Okay, okay. Because that's just, it's a really interesting, because you do, it's a whole staged car accident.
Oh, yeah, we had that.
You've done that before? Okay.
I think they changed it now to every, I think it's every four years they do it, because, you know, it's, it's not, you know, a cheap thing.
Right.
I understand that. But, you know, I mean, it's just maybe like something where like either a police officer or someone can like come in and inform students, you know, because, I mean, the freshmen, because I was a freshman last year when it happened, and, you know, we, not, a lot of the freshmen at least, we didn't, I was one of the few that got my permit, not all of them do, until they're at least senior, usually now, or even junior. And so it's always good to have, you know.
Yeah, and I'm also going to ask Officer Calpo about it, because I know he goes to the Miller Driving School and does presentations there where they do training, just so he can kind of keep people in the loop about the dangers that are possible. So that's a great idea, and I will let him know about that. Well, if we're all done, I would go ahead.
I have one more comment, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam Mayor. One thing that I might, you might go back and tell your fellow students, especially the new drivers. We heard a lot of concerns regarding speed around the city over the last couple of years. And so we are enacting more compliance regarding speeding concerns. And so tickets are on the increase, and they've also done some concerted efforts over at the high school with multiple agencies. So you might let your friends know to be cautious, because they're out there now more so than previously.
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Harvey?
One other opportunity that you may have is, every year we have the annual Kids' Day Parade in town, and during the parade, there's then a festival afterwards. And we're always looking for volunteers to help with that. You know, there's games and things like that that need to be organized. So that's another possibility for you. You can check in with City Hall, because they're always looking for volunteers to help staff that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will come down and present you with your honorary mayor certificate, as well as a pin from the City of Kattati. And then I understand there's some interest to have the photo, so let's all come down and give that opportunity to Colton.
Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
from Larry Hoberg, so I'm going to reopen citizens business and see if Mr. Hoberg would like to come forward.
How's it going, guys? Good evening. My name's Larry Hoberg. I work with Luxury Taxi. I saw you guys up here about two weeks ago, I think it was. Just following up with the Lyft and the Uber kind of situation, going forward to kind of see what's there. I never heard back. I think Damian was going to call me back in regards to a few things, as maybe bringing in reduced permit fees for new drivers coming in. But I just wanted to bring you like a sample of how they market their cars. You won't see the, you won't see the mustache. It's not like it used to be, where they had a big three-foot one across the bumpers. Just trying to get a, you know, just an even playing field. You know, there's 12 to 14 Lyft cars out there now, which in reality is almost, what, four grand for you guys, for your budget, in fees, that aren't being collected. If I have, they don't fingerprint, they don't drug test. I have drivers that are approved in Petaluma that go through the same background check that we do here in Kattati. If one of them was to pick up here, they would get a $500 ticket, fined for picking up out of, out of the district or out of their jurisdiction. They don't. There is no, their background check is a photo ID, and if just a basic DMV, they run through Megan's Law, but it's based on name and a social. We all know how easy those are to acquire, and, you know, without a fingerprint, those don't change. So you can be somebody else and, you know, they, what was I going to say? So their minimum requirements for driving? One year and 21 years of age. They're not local. If you don't believe me, take a ride with them. Ask them where they're from. You're going to get Voyo, Vacaville, San Francisco, nowhere near here. You know, we're local businesses. We're here, you know, we pay our taxes, and that's money out of our pocket that's going to them. Their vehicle inspections aren't required, they just changed them up. Originally, their vehicle inspections, to make sure the cars were safe, were done by not a mechanic, but a trainer, that was training them how to drive for Lyft. They had just changed that, I think, I want to say in December. And from what I'm seeing, there was nothing that made them go through and recertify the cars that were done by the peers or by their mentors. You know, going forward, it would be nice to have, you know, something that allows us an even playing field. Make them get permitted. You know, do something that makes it, because they can operate at a lower cost than us, because they don't. You know, we pay our $170 per driver for everything else, for their right to operate in the town of Kattati. And going forward, it makes it difficult, because you're starting, you're going to lose taxi drivers, you're going to lose a lot of business from them, which isn't, isn't fair. You know, we're here, we have children, we have wives, we have mortgage payments, we have property tax payments. You guys know, we like the property tax payments, right? And those aren't going to be made. You know, they're going to have to go other jobs, or to do other things. And the fact is, they can operate anywhere in California, so all they would need to do was find my phone. And I have a Lyft app on it. They can operate as me, because when you get in the car at nighttime, you can't tell who it is. Okay. I want to thank you guys very much for your time. Please let me know of any way that I can, what you guys would need from me. If I emails, anything, this is all new. But I want to thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you. And I wanted to ask our acting city manager, this is a future agenda item, isn't it, that we've been researching, so we can discuss it?
It's on the future calendar, yes, but we have to research it before we can bring it forward.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
So can we let Mr. Hoberg know when it's going to be on there, so he kind of has a.
Certainly, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to consent calendar. We have one item, the amendment to Acting City Manager Employment Agreement. Do I have, does anybody want to discuss this issue, or?
I'd like to approve.
Second? Do I need to open it up for public comment? Would anybody like to comment on the consent calendar item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If we could show that's a 5-0 vote in favor. Thank you. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Our first item is setting the amount of fines for violations of Kattati Municipal Code Chapter 9.38, alcohol offenses slash loud parties.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The council has already approved the alcohol offenses, loud parties ordinance. During the hearings, the chief, Chief Parish, informed council that fines would be set by council by resolution, which is what is being presented tonight. Chief Parish recommends the fines of $100 for posting the residents for 120 days. No loud parties are to happen during that time, to cover the administrative costs incurred by the city. Chief Parish further recommends that a $500 fine if they violate the posting during this 120-day period. And this is consistent with other jurisdictions in our region. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from council members? Councilmember Lehman?
Just a quick question, in terms of the, I get the idea of the two levels, an initial level and then a subsequent level that's higher is perhaps more of an intention getter, certainly. I was just curious how we came across those as comparables, are there industry standards, anything local? Not that I see anything terribly wrong, I'm just curious what the background is on it.
We, we took a look at other jurisdictions within the county, and ours, we wanted it to be, well, easy for the college kids to understand that what happens in Ronard Park will also happen in Kattati, and to make it consistent. So the, the fines are consistent with Ronard Park. And so that's, hopefully that answers your question.
I think it does. So we looked at local comparables, we're going for consistency with Ronard Park, because that does make sense, since that is, if not all of this, it's a significant part of this issue. So thank you for that.
Vice Mayor Moore?
No comments.
Okay. So I'll open this up to public comment. Would anybody like to comment on item three? Please.
Hello again. I'm a resident of Ronard Park, a homeowner. I live next to a frat house. I've gotten 120-day notice. All right, I've got it at 10 o'clock at night for a birthday party for my wife, because they thought we were the frat next door. It was, it's kind of absurd. If there's, is there a way to protest it? Because I know Ronard Park doesn't have one. I know there is no, I know if you, it was to be a nuisance call or a loud obnoxious, they have to release the names of the people that called. I think, is it disturbing the peace is the correct term? That they have to release the names of the people who call. I know that with neighbors, when they get in feuds, they like to call and complain over every little thing. Does this only pertain to alcohol and parties? If it's a sober party with loud music, is it going to pertain to them? If it's a domestic disturbance, if you're back for multiple times, will it also qualify for them? Or this is only based for the college kids? As a former college kid, you have to have fun sometime. You have to be able to get out and do it. And I understand that there's loud party notices, you know, if the parties get loud and get out of hand, but 120 days, even with Ronard Park, we've gone to battle for it. Because if there is no, it's the final word as soon as you put it in your window. And there's nothing you can do. If you come home late and the cops come over, you're getting your $500 fine. There has to be a way to, what's the word, protest it, or to bring forth something to go against it, to say, hey, this is what had happened, this is what had not. But 120 days, that's a long time. That's four months. That's, that's pretty much a whole semester. And if it only applies to renters, or does it apply only to everybody? Because if it applies to renters only, you know, you're going after the homeowner, who's also paying property taxes and being stuck with the same thing. It's just something that there has to be an out or a way to say, hey, look, there wasn't a party. Or is there a timeframe? It was past 10 o'clock, you know, which is the quote-unquote quiet hours. So something that gives you an option other than, it's 120 days, we showed up the first time, and you have a party and there's alcohol. Or if it's, you know, not alcohol, if there's a party. I mean, there's multiple things that could be before it went forward that you might want to look at. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. And just.
I wonder, Mayor Schumlin, if we could have, perhaps just have our staff, our lieutenant to give us at least a determination of what, because there's some pretty strong language in here in terms of what defines a public nuisance. And I think it makes more sense to let Lieutenant French speak to that rather than myself. But that is a number one, I can tell you. And certainly also, this is protestable. That was the subject of much discussion last time we were here, with some significant changes to actually make that more in line of supporting the public and through that action, too. So I think you'll be glad to hear that. And good or bad news, it does apply to everybody. There's a consistency, which I think is a good thing, too, so.
Just want to make sure it applied to not just alcohol teenagers.
Certainly so.
Domestic violence.
But I would like to hear that, too, Madam Mayor. That would be helpful, I think.
So we'll put Lieutenant French back on the hot seat. And I do understand there's an appeals process that's available, and it's through a non-police officer related, so it'll be through the city manager if it does need to be appealed.
That is correct, Mayor. I don't know where.
9.38.1.
I don't know where to start.
There were a lot of questions, yeah.
As far as what a public nuisance is, and this is directed at unruly parties. Could it be a party that adults out of college are at? Yeah, that's a possibility. But we, we respond to so many calls that the party is out of control, and there's a lot of things going on in the neighborhood that just are offensive to the, to the neighbors of the party. And we, we go and we respond, and we try to figure out what's going on and, and who's being affected by it, and who's trying to sleep. And we're also very concerned about people leaving the party that are under the influence of alcohol. And so this, this strict policy and ordinance is very much needed, because the alcohol use and abuse is continuing in the college, with the college kids these days. And we see it every weekend, and especially every Thursday night. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't relate to domestic disturbances or disturbing the peace calls, arguments, anything like that. This is specifically targeting loud, unruly parties that are out of control, where there's, there's too much drinking going on, they're, they're affecting the neighborhood, and we need to get involved, and it's a serious matter, because there's, there's people there, there might be alcohol poisoning, in need of help, and we try to provide that. But it's something that just is out of control, and so we, we felt that this was necessary. And it's also necessary to align, to be in line with the other jurisdictions in our area, too.
Well, and also, I just wanted to be clear on the record, we're not targeting any one group of people in the, in the community. That's why we needed to make it broad. And we do have an appeals process built in, but if you needed more information, we also have the outline of it. Sorry, you can't.
We can't do it back and forth, sorry.
It's just a, that's all right. So anyway, so hopefully that answered some of the questions. Did anybody else have any comments or anything that they wanted to state before we take a vote? All right, seeing none, I will ask if we have a motion.
I'd like to adopt a resolution setting the amounts for the fine of violation for Kattati Municipal Code Chapter 9.38, alcohol offenses and loud parties.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll show it's a 5-0 vote in support. Thank you. Move on to item number four, agreement for closed-circuit television inspection of the sanitary sewer system. I'll turn to Acting City Manager Damian Obed.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this, the agenda item before you is about sewer inspection, which is actually more riveting than most of what you'll find on TV late at night. And it's, it's basically a method of inspecting sewer systems, where you want a camera down the sewer line, and look for physical defects in the pipelines, sags, cracks, joints that have separated, roots that have intruded. You know, it's a visual inspection of, that's an indication of deterioration. And it's a, it's a best practice, as opposed to just replacing sewer lines based on age alone. Age is one factor when you assess conditions of utilities, of infrastructure, but inspection is sort of the next layer of condition assessment. So that you, when you start prioritizing your capital projects, you look at the, the age of your infrastructure, you know, your failure rates, and then your visual inspections, is, so that way you can more efficiently target infrastructure money, instead of replacing lines just purely based on age or something else. You can replace things based on its actual condition and failure history. And typically CCTV is done during the winter time, when the groundwater levels are higher, because then you can see typically that at that time, the sewer lines would be submerged in the groundwater. groundwater. So, you can see if there's, because they're non-pressurized pipes, you can see if there's physical defects that allows groundwater to intrude or surface water to come in from rainfall. And it's one of two methods for sewer line inspection. The other commonly used one is smoke testing. And that's typically a summer, they do it in the summertime typically, and they basically drop a smoke bomb in the sewer and look for where it comes out. And it's kind of a simplified version of what it is. That one obviously requires noticing of residents before you do that because it may have become, well, Lieutenant French here may get calls on something like that. But that's not what's, so before you tonight is the CCTV part of it. And I expect in the future there will also be a smoke testing part as well. They don't look for the same things. The smoke testing looks for manholes and infiltration, direct infiltration, connections to the laterals from people's downspouts where you're having rainwater come in to your sewer system. And sewage is expensive to convey and to treat, and obviously you want to be treating just sewage and not a bunch of rainwater, which doesn't need to be treated. So, the two inspection methods go hand in hand. And we put it out to bid, there was two bidders on this project. Mixis was one and Empire Pipe Cleaning was the other. And what's proposed is a five-year contract, so over the course of five years, we would be rotating throughout different zones of the city, inspecting them and cataloging the conditions of those segments of the city sewer system. And in the adopted 1415 budget, there is a $125,000 budget line item for this activity. So, there's no appropriation needed for this contract. And we would proceed probably as soon as the end of this winter on this contract and then pause until the next winter, and then we'd pick it up again, that'd be next fiscal year. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the case? Councilmember Harvey?
Have we done this before? And if we have, when did we do it and what is sort of the best practices for us, for a city to do this?
So, as a matter of routine, when we have new sewer lines installed, we get them video inspected before we take possession of them, so we know what their condition is before we actually own the thing. And sometimes when there's specific issues that we're tracking down, we'll video inspect them. But more recently, we haven't been doing sort of a systematic inspection of all the areas, because there could be things that we just don't know about that are maybe groundwater intrusion areas. That would be easy fixes. So, right now, we're addressing mostly areas that come up and they become issues for us, so we look at them for newer, new installations, we look at them as well.
So, is it fair to say that this is more a proactive approach than what we've had in the past, which is reactive if we see a problem?
Yeah, it's been reactive in the past, and this is definitely a proactive approach.
And then is it similar to how we do with the roads where it's better to be proactive and fix things when they're small problems versus big problems?
Yes, yeah. Certainly with sewer, you don't want a small problem or a known problem to turn into a big problem or a spill or something like that.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Councilmember Lehman.
Along the same lines as Councilmember Harvey, I could see why if, having the money during the difficult times that all cities have been dealing with the last half-decade or so, it may be difficult to have the funds to initiate doing this sort of work with a camera, a camera-based system. But I would imagine that has to be a lot more cost-effective than just what in essence is almost random replacement. I mean, granted, you're taking a guess at how long a pipe should last before it falls apart, but the truth of the matter is, I don't know what the calculation would be, but it seems very wasteful because you could be replacing pipes that are perfectly fine or having pipes that are sitting there and have been failed for perhaps a decade and spending a lot of costs there too. So, is there a guess at all at how much savings are involved in this?
So, age is one indicator of condition, but it's typically a poor indicator. There's a lot of other factors that go into it. And it definitely saves you from reactive replacement, which, you know, can be, especially if they're reactive and responding to an actual emergency, it can be very expensive. And if you can, if you can plan it, you know, you do an assessment and then you plan it out over time, you can get to things in a kind of a logical sequence instead of having to respond or just replacing things based on age, which may not be the best use or the most efficient use of money.
Well, I'd have a much greater comfort level as a council member, spending money and replacing pipes that I know need to be replaced as opposed to making a guess, so this sounds very good. Thank you.
Yes, or no?
Yes. This would cover all of the sewer lines within the city?
Correct. So, the first year would be just a, like a zone of the sewer system. And it doesn't commit the council to future-year expenditures, it just sets the contract up so that if the council decides to appropriate money in addition, you know, in future years, that we can continue with the work. But it would eventually do the entire sewer system.
Okay. And so, the zones would be broken up proportionately, like the first year would be 20% of the overall sewer structure?
Yeah, we would...
Approximately.
Yeah, there's, there are sewer sheds, don't say that five times too fast, sewer sheds. And so, we would probably target them in accordance with, like the sewer master plan, they have sewer sheds, we would target it like that. So, you focus on an area, then you move to another area the next year.
And I'm assuming with your knowledge of the infrastructure, we would target the most vulnerable section first?
Areas in our sewer master plan, some areas had higher levels of I&amp;I than others, and so we would target those first.
And then it doesn't lock us in down the road after the first year?
No, we could just do one year and then do nothing else. It just sets up a five-year agreement that we can use in future years if the council appropriates that.
So, if in year two and a half, we have some other unforeseen situations, we could delay the further implementation of that or...
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, now that we've discussed it, I'll open it up for public comment. Is anybody interested in commenting on item number four? Okay, please come forward.
I have a question. Given that this process takes place in the winter and is dependent on groundwater and is measuring that type of interaction, what effect is the drought going to have on the efficacy of this process?
Thank you. So, if I can turn to our Acting City Manager?
So, there, while groundwater levels aren't as high as maybe they can be historically in some really wet years, their groundwater levels are fairly typical right now. And it still doesn't preclude you from seeing any sort of physical defect in the line. It's not unusual that you, you know, every year's going to be a little bit different in terms of the groundwater level. So, it's not unusual to have some years where it's a little bit higher than other years, but it's basically, there's no significant drop in groundwater level that's going to make a significant difference.
Okay, thank you. So, we have any other further questions or do we have a motion?
Move to authorize the Acting City Manager to execute a five-year agreement for the closed-circuit television inspection of the city's sanitary sewer system. And I'd be happy to second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If we could show for the record, that's a 5-0 vote in favor. Thank you. And I will move on to City Manager's report. Back to our Acting City Manager, Damian Obed.
All right, I will say that was riveting.
Although we did lose somebody. I'll try harder next time. Okay, so it's a short one. I just wanted to announce that Officer Marcos Perez of our police department was nominated to be the Officer of the Year for the Roanoke Park Cotati Rotary Club. As a public safety officer from Cotati. So, that's very exciting for Marcos and for all of us, yeah. And then also, I also wanted to announce that we have a, as of this week, we have a new police dispatcher, Darlene Arand, and in a forthcoming council meeting, we'll have her come up and introduce her. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I might?
Yes.
I wonder if for Officer Perez, when the Officer of the Year presentation comes, if we could be notified of when that might be? There might be something, someone who might want to attend.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Sure.
All right, so we'll move on to City Council reports. So, I'll start on my right tonight. Councilmember...
Okay, that would be me. Just a couple of quick items. Actually, one that's coming up this Thursday is Sonoma County Ag Preservation Open Space District Meeting, but it's a dual meeting. So, we've now formed a subcommittee on agricultural issues in the county and how ag and open space deals with that. I think everybody knows Sonoma County Ag and open space for the land that's been preserved... I'm out of time, thank you. Keep going. All right, thanks. That was close. For, you know, the open space that has been secured over the years, I mean, we're talking thousands, thousands of acres, but lesser known for protecting ag, which is, you know, the biggest industry in our county. So, we formed this ag subcommittee, so that's going to meet like from 4:00 to 5:00, and then from 5:00 to 7:00 will be our regular monthly meeting. So, I'll report out on that when I come back. And I know this may sound a little gigglish and funny, but I'm going to report out on it. And I was invited to be a mock judge for the Miss Sonoma County Pageant, I guess is the word. So, myself, DA Ravitch was there, Aaron Carlstrom from San Rosa City Council, and a couple of business leaders. And we did this on Sunday, where we did the teens first and then the more adults. And I have to say, there were some incredibly, this is not your mother's beauty contest any longer.
It's a scholarship fund.
These guys are really bright and articulate, and we were there to critique them. We did have a list, and Sue, I think you did this last year. There was a list of questions, which I strongly recommended one question be dropped completely because when I asked it of one contestant, the question was something along the lines of, when was the last time you cried and why? And this woman went in to explain how on Valentine's Day, she laid down on the floor in her room and cried all day. And I said, you know, why are we asking questions like this? It was absolutely ridiculous, but she did a great job, and she did recover from that according to her words. So, anyway, it was an interesting, interesting event, and we were there for like almost four hours doing this. It was amazing how long it went on. But, and I guess that Pageant is coming up next weekend or the weekend after, I think it's kind of coming up shortly, and it's usually over at Spreckles. But that is my report out.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Okay. I have a little bit more, so I'll try and go fast. On February 12th, I attended the mayor's and council members, and that was very informative. On 2/17, I went to the school board meeting, and that was with Beth Dadko from the Health Department that did the portrait of Sonoma County. She did a combined one for Roanoke Park and Cotati, and I was joined by Councilmember Gina Belfort for Roanoke Park. And so, we got to see what both communities looked like from a health action perspective. And one of the asks was, at that point, was to reestablish our two-by-two-by-two, because we haven't had any in a while. After that, I got a note from Gina stating that while John and I still have our spots from a Cotati perspective, Roanoke Park doesn't have their two picked. So, as soon as that happens, then I'll probably be asking that staff work with the staff of Roanoke Park and the school board to get those going again, because it sounds like we do have stuff to talk about. The next meeting I attended was the Waste Management Agency meeting on the 18th. I know that the Acting City Manager gave you a little bit on that, but there's some hopping things going with that. You know, there's the lawsuit, which we're trying to deal with, not much I can talk about on that. Because of the things that are going on, we will have to look at raising rates. So, staff was given direction to bring back what some of that might look like. There were those that wanted it solely to go to the curb cans and not impact the self-hall and others, you know, that felt that, you know, there should be at least some sense of sharing in that rate impact. The concern with the self-hall had to do with that that's the quality of stuff that comes in with that. They don't really want to discourage that. So, that's one of the things the staff will look at in doing that. And then, of course, at some point, we will be coming back with the JPA agreement, whatever form that takes. Hard to say how that form will take. And lastly, we appointed an interim agency council. The attorney that was our attorney since 2005 tendered their resignation. So, we have an interim attorney and we will ultimately look for a final there. Then on the 18th, I also attended the Cotati Oversight Board where we approved ROPS for 2015. On the 19th, I attended Laguna Walk given by Jenny Blaker that, as Mark points out, you know, very involved in creek critters. So, I was able to go kind of look at some of those properties, see where the Laguna Head Lines is again, even though I'd done it before, it'd been, you know, it'd been a while since I'd been, so that was, that was helpful. And then last but not least, I attended, they had a hunger index forum in Santa Rosa, and they brought together, all the city councils were all invited, I think everybody got notes to go, but I actually went, it was really very interesting. In looking at Sonoma County, there is a need for meals of 216 million meals. And of that 216 million meals that are needed, there are 129 million that are purchased by low-income families. There are 52 million provided by the very many nonprofits in the county. And basically, the difference between those and the 216 million is a gap of 35 million meals. So, that means that there are many folks within Sonoma County that are going without meals. So, it was looking at different ways to look at that. I think at some point for our community, especially since we are looking to have the health and wellness in our general plan, that this is something that maybe when we have our strategic planning next year, that we look at some of the other programs. They do have a program in Windsor that maybe we can, you know, look at something like that. But it was very interesting, and what I'll leave you with is, these meals, basically it costs $2.27 for a meal. And if everybody, as was put out there by the gentleman from the Redwood Empire Food Bank, said if everybody would double up, you know, if you had $2.27 and you were able to then double that, we would go a long way in coming up with those 35 million meals that are short.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn to my left, Councilmember Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor Schillman. Let's start with Sonoma Clean Power. I have really, really big news, but I can't tell you. Can't tell you just yet, but I would say to everyone here on the dais and out in the audience and in the press, keep an eye, this Thursday, we should have a press release, something, there's nothing new, completely new under the sun, but this is a relatively new thing, at least in this state. It's kind of a, something new and somewhat untried, but it's something new in local sustainable power we're going to be trying, so look forward to that. I'll tell you all about it next time. Then secondly, let's see, we recently had our mayor's and council members Legislative Committee meeting. I want to give you a heads up, particularly to my alternate. We have a field trip coming up in May. We're going to go to Sacramento to lobby our local legislators. Should be a full-day trip, road trip as they say. Should be very good. I've heard rumors there could be a lunch with Senator McGuire's office. We'll see how, that could be a good time if that happens.
Do you have a, is there a date set for that?
Not just yet. We're just firming that up, because the process looks like this. First of all, legislation is just beginning to form up, and we have to spend the next month or so taking a look and seeing what do we really want to leverage all our combined force behind. And there's a few directions. Right now, I'm thinking there seems to be some potentially big legislation coming regarding funding for roadwork, transportation from Speaker Atkins. That might be a very good direction, because I think that's something that affects all of us in the whole region and something that we could all get behind to push on, but that remains to be seen. But I wanted to let you know about that, because I would love to have you come, and I think that would be a good thing for as many of us to go as possible. And I will also say, after seven long years, I have to report that Chair Gary Plas has stepped down. We just had our... We just had our elections, and Gary is no longer Chair. I'm the new Chair for Legislative Committee for Mayor's and Councilmembers here in the county for this year. So thank Mr. Plas. He's done this for a long time. We're glad to have him still as part of the committee, taking advantage of all that experience. So that's what I have for you this time around.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Moore?
Well, the week of the 8th, I believe, 7th, 8th, 6th, 7th, 8th of February, I was in Los Angeles for the Parma Public Agency Risk Managers Association Conference as a representative for Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. There were some very good sessions and some good ideas on what we can do to limit some of our exposure and some of the costs associated with some of the risk management. Of course, there were some sessions where not so good, but most of them were very good. And then REMIF is moving along very well in the potential self-funding process. Some of the numbers that are... We're looking at potentially, provided we get some adequate stop-loss or reinsurance quotes for the higher numbers, could come in at close to $2 million in savings. So the more we delve into it, the more encouraging it looks. Of course, there's no guarantees, but it's moving along. And if things go well and the board approves this process, we may be able to implement that in July, maybe August at the latest. So if things are going well. And then regarding the Library Advisory Board, we had a conflict on scheduling, so I was not able to attend that last one, but hope to attend the others. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. And the only thing, I also attended the Mayor's and Councilmembers Dinner on the 12th. And then on the 15th, I'm glad to hear some others were able to participate as well. Jenny Blaker took me on a tour. And that was just really interesting to get some history of Katati, and I'd never walked back in that section to see the beginning of the creek. And so anyway, it was fascinating to see that we were actually the source and to see some of the farmland back there. And that whole garden that they have set up is really fantastic. So anyhow, glad that we were able to do some of that.
Can I add one thing to the Jenny trip, too? Because she had talked to me weeks ago when we did that. I'm going to bring that up to the ag and open space staff. In the next cycle of their grant funding, which will be about a year-plus out, if there's something over in that area that we might want to consider doing, that would be somewhat of a preservation. There's some prime state ag lands, I think is what they're called over there. There seems to be a number of things that are all just kind of on the periphery that it might apply. And what we would do, I have no ideas at this point, but I think depending on when our next strategic planning session might be, this is something it'd be great for us to be thinking about. And when that comes up, you know, no different than what we did with the Falletti property a number of years ago, this might be a great opportunity to do something again.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Actually, excited to hear that. I'm thinking back on the Laguna Mark West scoping process from a few years ago. Our Acting City Manager is going to remember that one. And I see a lot of nodding heads here, but the bottom line, we had a plan that involved some restoration improvements, general things like that, that included that area that was very, very high. I believe it came out number two. Still think it should have been number one, too, on the ranking list and that. So I don't know where that's at, what the potential... But I would think with some of the monies coming towards restoration and water in more current budgets, if there's any area for cross-collaboration with that, I just wanted to put that out there.
The other thing I might add, and the mayor may have more information on this, but the Prop 1B money is also focused for recharge watershed-type projects as well. That's a priority in that bond.
That's kind of my thought. There's got to be some way to tie those all together. If we can bring that many pieces, and you have something, not only just takes care of the headwaters of the Laguna de Santa Rosa, but also, as your planning vision, was something that actually benefited numerous communities, had community connector aspects in it, recreation, exercise, healthy living, walkable town, as well as the restoration protection aspect. That should be something that I think would compete well. Perhaps could get funded. So I'd like to see it.
Yeah. And it was interesting, too, with all of the work on the smart, you could actually... The connectivity issue with the bike trail coming through, and then it's actually going to connect over to the smart rail trail that they're setting up there as well. So you've got, like you were saying, the recreation, you've got the public garden, which are community garden, which is really nice. And then it'd be working with... I know parts of it are on Rona Park and parts of it are in Katati. So it'd be great to see a collaborative effort to help maintain and preserve that area, so...
I wonder if I could ask what would be the appropriate timeline, perhaps, to bounce this off the agency or... Because you have some pretty deep background in this type of thing. Because I'm not sure where they are at in process with this right now, but I wonder if it would be work at some point, peeing them to see if we can kind of wake this process back up.
I've already asked them the question. We haven't been able to connect yet. But where it is, basically, is the scoping study was done, it ranked projects. And then the next step was to take the highest-ranked projects and take the next step, do a feasibility study, which is an actual on-the-ground study of the project areas to see if they are in fact... If they'd still rank as high after they've actually been...
Right. And I believe that was done with the Golden Creek, that was number one, I think, wasn't it, in Rona Park? I think that's the one that came out number one. I think they actually did...
That project already had a whole bunch of grant funds attached to it. It was already...
It was pre-baked, ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So if we're done, I will adjourn the meeting, and we will adjourn to closed session to finish up our last couple of items. So thank you very much for being here this evening.